Okay, the September 23rd, 2020 Board of Sclumming meeting will come to order. I'd like to thank everyone who's joining us either on Facebook Live or those joining us on the phone. If you're joining us on the phone, please remember speaker line muted until called upon. And as a reminder, when you do want to meet, you'll press star three. Thank you. So may I start if anybody don't mind joining for the pledge?
Let's begin it through the flag of the United States of America and in truth, a republic, ferocious hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. So we're going to approve the special meeting minutes for August 26th, 2020. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 26th? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
No understanding, correct? Thank you. All those in favor? Motion carries. So when our correspondence, we've all got it, we received really brief update overview from the climate change task force. I think June will probably go into more detail during those updates.
Yes.
Perfect. We also received additional applications. This reminder during our last Board of Sclumming meeting, we entered into correspondence, previous applications we see for the police commission. These are now additional ones. We received additional applications from Carrie McWilliams, Stephen Freitas, Robert Emery, John Rosaro, Brian Bent, Patricia Cohen, and Lisa Tupper-Bates, who are all interested in serving on the Board of Police Commission. Just to note, we'll be holding interviews for the vacancies sometime in the first full week of October. And they're going to be reaching out to all applicants this week to provide them with more details. And we'll hold a special Board of Sclumming meeting that's specifically focused up on interviews since we have so many, which is so wonderful. So thank you to everyone who has applied and shown an interest in public service. So thank you. Further, and for those that might be listening, we will stream that interview virtually because it will be a special Board of Sclumming meeting. We also received an application from Katie Martin for the Public Ad hoc Committee. And then we also received applications from Marcy Riley, Susan Hibbert, and Lindsay Price Fairchild for the Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Committee, which is so exciting. So if people want to scan Bob's. And on the appointment side, so as you guys remember, from the Public Communications Ad hoc Committee, from when we were all first doing together, we began the process of creating this committee at the beginning of the year, which was put on hold essentially till now. Since this committee is an ad hoc committee and it's pretty short term, and as a reminder, they're set up to study and explore the different communication mediums in order to provide hopefully more accurate and better information to residents and also from residents. And so with that, we'll have a few things we'll talk about this later on too. But first, could I get a motion to officially appoint Katie Martin, Bruce Black, Demi Lee Sin, Daniel McFadden, and Anne Harvey as regular members, and Kristen Clark and Elizabeth Ebby Young as an alternate member of the Public Communications Ad hoc Committee?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the appointment?
Does that have a question for something that's ad hoc? So how long will it last?
So we'll get to that. Yeah, we'll get to that in a later segment, but essentially a year.
A year. Right.
Great. So motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Great. The motion carries. And thank you guys for your service and we'll get started in October. So for reappointments, could I have a motion to reappoint Christopher Thorpe and Christopher Delaney to the Architectural Design Review Board?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you to the Christopher's for staying on the board. Under COVID-19 updates, people should be actually six minutes ago, that might be very overwhelming. An Everbridge update from Sonya, that's what I'm saying. You saw it live. So people who signed up for Everbridge updates should have gotten one, but to say that starts on Friday, September 25th, the Friday, and then also Friday, October 2nd, behind Human Services, Yale even help us in offering free COVID testing. You don't need any appointment. It's free. It should be hopefully quick. And they're encouraging it from 9:00 AM till 3:30. They're urging anyone who actually don't have symptoms, now that testing is more readily available, go out, get tested. But see, never know, you might be one of the people who has and is carrying it and doesn't know. So if you can and they're willing, go by and we would appreciate it. So thank you. And then the only other update I wanted to give was, we have it on the town website and a link to it, but the state has kind of updated their COVID website. And there's some really, I think, good and interesting stuff, kind of some high level ones. If you actually want to get in and really get into the data, they've done a really good job. One of the highlights that I wanted to share was from New London County, looking at cases per 100,000 on that seven day rolling average. We're at 2.7. The state is at four, and anything under 10 is considered low risk. So we're doing really well. Obviously, this can change us all in schools. So everyone, keep wearing your mask, keep washing your hands, do everything you can. And it also says hospitalization, given that same look at for 100,000 on the seven day average for New London County. We're at .3, which is the same as the state average. So we are doing really well. We want to keep it that way. Anything people can do is hopeful. But those are my COVID updates.
I just had a quick note, and it's been totally sorted for four dollars back.
Four dollars back. Back on the list.
But again, it gets me this for $24.
Yes.
It's because you're there for overnight.
Yes, yes, and vice versa. So we can still have people for work and for school and for shopping.
So I have a question about testing.
Yes.
Do you have to be a Stonington resident or is it open to anybody in the area or?
See, they're not asking for any appointments or ideas, so I think it could be for anyone. But it's set up to ask Stonington Human Services, but I mean, if somebody wants to move around, sure, from North Stonington or somewhere else, they'd be welcome.
Okay.
So more under old business back to the Public Communications Ad hoc Committee mission. So now that, in a good way, since we originally set this up and the timeline was set to end August 31st, 2020, this is all before COVID, obviously, and we haven't had the opportunity to speak them until just now. We wanted to actually extend their deadline to October 31st, 2021, because they'll have their first meeting in October. So that would give them a full year. We did, I did consult with the members. They liked the idea of a year. So, but because that was part of what we approved, I wanted to just have us officially approve it. So we'd like to add to their, and in addition to changing the date, we also wanted to add to their mission. It was something I mean, we had all thought of, but then when I wrote it, it didn't necessarily capture it as specifically as it should. And then they actually, a few members brought it up as a specific goal as well. So we'd like to add to the mission to explore ways for boards and commissions to better communicate with the public as well as with each other. So outward and cross communication. And then also changing the wording, and item number two in the mission list should be consider the establishment of a town newsletter and other forms of communication, including the costs involved. So we just wanted to be sure broader, because they brought, they'd like to think of the website, or they'd also like to think about some other vehicles for communication, video, podcasts, the newsletter, all different things, even for other towns they're doing. So we didn't want to like pigeonhole them to just forget one thing.
Okay.
Aye, thank you. So could I have a motion to give the Public Communications Ad hoc Committee a deadline of October 31st, 2021, subject to extension, extension if necessary, as well as maybe additions to their mission?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Perfect.
All right. Thank you. The motion carries. Now you can hopefully get in the way that there's a challenge timing.
Yeah.
The date, so we have to vary it. Okay, so in the new business, we have a request from Alan and Tanya Silvestri of the Silvestri Foundation, a nonprofit organization that supports community members with disabilities and provides inclusive programming in schools. They recently acquired a property at 101 West Broad Street and will be renovating it to design a long-term solution for programming and support for adults in the community. Half the site to include life, employment, and social skills education, as well as a residential living component and area for healthcare providers, health, and administration. They anticipate investing over $1 million in the project and are requesting a building permit waiver of $8,138. I believe Alan Silvestri is joining us on the phone. Alan, did you want to add anything?
Well, thank you. And I get to talk without a mask because I'm in my own home. So you're doing a good job. I assume you need a breath so I can say one thing or another. Thanks for the consideration. I mean, the idea came up because of asking for the requests when we were working with David Hammond and Leanne Theodore and others. It's been a few years that we've been working on this project, kind of hand in hand with the town and human services. And the project itself, it does not have an economic engine to move it. So you know, the total costs are about $2 million and Tanya and I are investing that out of our own savings to do that. The reason this is such a necessity, and we know that with the human services, is that the adults with the disabilities in our community often fall kind of a rabbit hole associated with services after they reach a certain age. So we've been investing significant time and money in the community for the younger, school-aged children in the last 10 years. It's been very successful. We had this opportunity to acquire this property and looked at it very closely. It's very well positioned for the community that we serve because of the ability for people to walk to services. And we've already been able to communicate with and get, I would say, a very strong indication of interest of 26 organizations that want to support our community members. It would be easier for us and less expensive to do this somewhere else in the town. But we're very committed to the property because of its location for services. And quite frankly, we think it can be a hallmark for the revitalization of the downtown. So what we did when we did the project's planning, we worked very hard with our architect, John Walsh. We connected with the town through the Economic Development Commission and Human Services to make sure that the current building, which is an 1857 building, is being brought back to its glory in a quality that is really second to none. So we're sparing no expense to make sure that it's done properly, not just for the community members that we serve through handicapped access, but also for the town so that you can really be proud of it. The idea that it doesn't really have an economic engine is of course our choice. But the, having been running organizations before, they've provided these services. What happens is that the day service program gets funding from the state of Connecticut. And they basically lose every hour that they provide service. They lose, let's call it $20, because the services that are paid for are not able to keep up with the costs of the services. So what we've done is the organization that is going to come in to run those services for us, we've given them rent free for three years. So we worked hard on the pro forma with the organization to make sure that they could sustain themselves in our town. We wanted them to be able to reach out and be fully staffed out of the gate. We wanted them to be able to take the time to be fully integrated into our town. They've visited the town on multiple occasions. We've had the town to their sites. They're an established organization for 30 years. It actually employs 180 people in another set of towns right up the shoreline. And we really went far into what we could do to give them this rent free. And we think it's going to be helpful long-term for everybody, but that's part of the reason that the economic engine is so weak. And in addition, we're providing community support services at no charge in other parts of the building. So I think it's, we believe it's a great project. We're happy to invest our money in it. Tanya and I have been committed to this for decades. We're happy to see it come to fruition. I know you'd be proud of it. And any help we could get would be gratefully appreciated. And that was mentioned when the time comes to ask for help by a couple of the townspeople we work with. So this is the help that we're asking for out of the gate. We're hopeful that you can see so to do it. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Alan. Ever, do you have any questions for Alan while he's on or?
So I do. Is there a time crunch to get this, to approve this? Alan, I'm not familiar with the organization and would love an opportunity to sit down with you, perhaps one-on-one on the phone or in person with Matt, or socially distant, just so she can give me a few more details.
Absolutely.
Me, from like the, a very high level, it sounds wonderful, but I would just like to know a little bit more. So if there isn't like an absolute time crunch, like it has to be approved today or the project not going to go forward. If we have a little bit of time, I would like to be able to ask some more questions and do a little more.
I think we might have some. Thank you. Select moment struck, right?
Yes.
Trying to visualize. Yeah, you would be able to answer that better than I. First of all, we'd be very happy to answer any questions and take you through that process. The time, I think, is John Corlin and the Corlin Group we've hired to be our construction managers. And when we hired them, I thought that the building permit would have been submitted by now. And I didn't want the building permit to be submitted and not have put the request in. The best guess I have, because they've been on site for the last two weeks doing some due diligence, is that the building permit will come in within a week, week and a half. I don't really know. I just didn't want to be behind the curve because I thought once it was approved as a building permit, that asking for a reduction to the building permit fees would be a mute point. But other than that, of course, I wouldn't rush you through anything and happy to answer any questions you might have. That would just be my response. I'm not as aware of the processes because I haven't been through this big one before.
All right. Do you have similar questions?
Yeah. No, I'd like to learn a little more too, because you know, I just saw this for the first time, you know, yesterday evening. So I'd love to be able to find out a little bit more, if indeed there wasn't a crunch for today. But certainly within, you know, before our next meeting.
Yes.
Sure.
I mean, so if you will, after the meeting, just a follow-up and both June and Deb could reach out separately because of FOI things, but to learn a bit more about the nonprofit that you'll be supporting. But just to echo, yeah, I mean, this does sound amazing and our human services team speaks very highly of you and the plans you have in place. So we're very excited. But thank you for giving us a little more, some due diligence for the waiver.
Absolutely. Feel free to reach out. My cell phone is available for you and happy to answer any questions. Thank you for the consideration.
So could I, could I give a motion to table the request for the building permit waiver fee of $8,138 to our next Board of Sclumming and Special Meeting?
So move. I have a second.
Yeah. Yeah, that would definitely give us enough time to reach out to Alan and just, you know, separately individually and ask more questions and learn some more about it.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
John, all those in favor?
Thank you for your time.
Yes.
Okay, so the next item is comments from the public. As a reminder, you can press star three to unmute your line. Also as a reminder, we don't have the resources to also be checking Facebook Live. So if you're making comments there, we won't see them, but you can press star three and talk on the phone. I don't think we have any. And again, people can always email or call town halls during business hours as well if you want to help follow up or email. So last call, nothing? Okay. So the next item on the agenda is comments from the Sclumming. Deb, you welcome back?
I actually do have a couple comments. Neither are on the list because I was away for three weeks. And so although I followed the minutes, really none of them, only one of them met. But I really just wanted to take a minute and remember Ruth Bitterginsberg, who passed away this week. She was a long, kind of role model of mine, someone who lived her life for community and not just for herself. Kind of a beacon. And to me, I feel like one way to remember her is to continue public service and compassionate public service. She will be soaring it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking of it a lot. And on a happier note, I did want to congratulate Matt Redoin and Mystic Notworks. Matt was awarded the 2020 Small Businessman of the Year Award, which is really exciting. So I'm happy for Matt and I'm happy that Mystic Notworks is part of our community. Yes.
Very happy. Get all my gifts there.
No, no, I'll have my late on reports next.
Thank you. And then?
Yes, I have a couple. K through 12 Building Committee. So ever since the addition at Bean's Mill School was up and running, there had been a problem with the water pressure. And we were going through different fixes. It didn't work. It looked as though the water meter needed to be replaced. And we were coming up with costs of about $50,000 to do that. Through, you know, your contact at Aquarian, Aquarian actually changed out the water meter at their cost. They did the excavation, they did the change out. Town cost, or the building cost ended up to be about $2,000 instead of, wow, instead of 50, and it's working. So if you're up on the second floor, as far away from the road as possible, the toilets will flush.
Yeah. And you thank you that you stepped through and saw that through the very end. I think a lot of people are like, oh, I give up and just pay that. So thank you for speaking with and working with Aquarian.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome. Well, the gentleman at the Aquarian representative, Brad Presley, yes, yeah, he was really, you know, answered every text right away. There is no delay. He said, okay, we're on it. We'll take care of it. So it was great. I know they're digging up our roads, but this is a really good, this is a really good thing that they do. And so that's for K through 12. For planning and zoning, I know that it's budget time, we're starting our budget time right now. I'm going to advocate, it's really important that we have enough money in the budget to redo our zoning regulations. It's really clear, I mean, it seems as though every meeting, there's an addendum to a particular regulation that is becoming cumbersome now for developers to go through the regulations to see if, you know, if they've got everything in place for a particular project. So they really need to be consolidated, updated. I know that the solar panel regulation part of our, of our regulations dates back to 1984. That segment alone hasn't been, hasn't really been updated. So all of our regulations really need to be updated quite a bit. So I will, you know, speak. We need to have the money to do that, in budget. I just want to say that the new project that got approved down by, by, yes, that, by that road there, I had attended the Police Commission meeting when this project was brought for the Police Commission. And the Police Commission literally spent over two hours talking about the state public safety, emergency access. And then when it got to planning and zoning, it was one sentence, that the Police Commission approved the project. Like, that does not reflect how much time and thought that went into it. So I was just thinking of, speaking with Keith, maybe, you know, add a little more information because there's been a couple of people from the public that have been attending the meetings now because they're all virtual. Then unless they've attended all these other meetings, they don't get to really see how much work has really gone into a one-sentence approval. So that, you know, part of the boards and commissions working better together and more communication, I think that would be very helpful.
They went through wetlands as well.
Yes, it did. And I think, I think they had two or three sentences. So, yes, they went through wetlands, it goes through all of that. So. And then, what was the other thing I had? Oh, the Climate Change Task Force. So the Climate Change Task Force met last week for the first time since January. It was a great meeting. So, but there are a couple of things missing, I think. Again, it's communication. I think it would be really important if a member of Planning and Zoning and a member of the Board of Finance was a member of the Climate Change Task Force. Very similar to the K through 12 Building Committee, where it was important to have someone from the Board of Ed and somebody from the Board of Finance on it so all of the expenses could be understood. Because, you know, climate change, making sure that we have coastal resiliency, all these things cost dollars. And also trying to identify planning and zoning to make sure that our zoning regulations reflect the plan of conservation and development, our coastal resiliency plan, we have all of these things, but they need to talk to one another. So I think that would be really helpful, very similar to the Library Task Force that the Board of Finance was sort of step up to implementing. And so there was a member of the public, a high school student who gave a presentation, a little bit of a presentation at the Climate Change Task Force meeting. She was awesome. One of the things that came out of that though too, is that students aren't really allowed to discuss this in school because it's considered political. So I asked her to reach out to the Board of Education. Because, you know, that's, yes.
It's like it's fine. Sorry.
I know, right?
So I think that's a good idea to have her reach out to the Board of Ed because you never know what's different in this community.
Yeah, yeah. She's 15, you know, so it's very enthusiastic about it. But, you know, they really thanked us for the guidance that we gave her as far as that. But I think, I think maybe the Climate Change Task Force is really important as far as, you know, putting all of these other boards and commissions together so that we have a plan that we all understand. I wanted to also put together a list of all the things that we've done in the town for the past like eight years or so that helps with being green.
Even the sewage treatment plant.
Well, the sewage, right, right. The sewage treatment plant, changing out our light. Why we don't have solar panels on the new schools. And that came up as a question. It's like, well, we couldn't have them if we wanted to have reimbursement for our, you know, our wood crops. So there's a whole list of things that I know that we've done, being involved with the Board of Finance and Board of Ed. And we've already done, that the public doesn't really know. So I'm going to work on a project I'm going to give myself to, you know, kind of summarize that and give it to the Climate Change Task Force so that they know about this and so that other people know that these are the things that we've been doing, ongoing. Yes, it's to save taxpayer dollars, but it also makes us greener.
Yes.
So, and I think, I think it was a pretty exciting meeting, so. Yeah, it was really very good. So, yeah.
No, that's really good. And I think, yeah, and I'll circle back with those recommendations. I think it could really make sense. I know having Board of Finance involved in other task things like that really is helpful for the level of understanding and expertise and also it educates, it serves as a two-way education for Board of Finance as well for the Task Force, like Climate Change. And if it could roll up into, so one, I would really love the help. I know we talked about trying to even color code or have some sort of abstract system in the budget book to like know when something is kind of either climate change or kind of sustainability related to show that. I think in addition to maybe be brought up, like some of our drainage works that public works and engineering does for, you know, flood control and work that doesn't necessarily get seen because it's literally underground. It would be good to know those things and also for future rating agency presentations to show even if our climate change light item might be lower than we want, there's a lot of money going to this in other places. And also like trees, open space, preservation of land, so other things on that kind of. There's, I think there's a number of things that we don't kind of give ourselves credit for, you know.
Yes.
And that we can also potentially advocate for larger budget funding, such as we, let's say, the Tree Warden and noting our $500 townwide tree budget, and so many trees are dying and there's so many different diseases out there happening and older trees in town that we really need to advocate for a larger tree budget. $500 for the town, it looks like two trees, maybe three.
Trees are, or they're so little, it's good, 30 years for them to have a positive impact.
So things like that. And just to note on, actually, it was great segue because we set up a slightly, I don't know, a slightly different concept for the SIP this year, just kind of tweaking, explaining some small improvements, I think, with our new Director of Administrative Services. And so actually, all of the SIP budgets will be today. Obviously, they'll be months worth, they can change and enhance and add. But then we'll have a public meeting in October to get public input. And then we'll sit as a kind of our SIP committee, which includes someone, actually two people from the school side, to try and really discuss things ahead of it coming to our meeting in January. So I think that'll be helpful. But one of the things that is on the plug, did make it into this and we're going to try and really advocate for on the latter front, is the comprehensive review of the zoning regulations because it touches on climate change, it touches on economic development, it touches on so many things. So we will be advocating for that one. So yeah, the SIP stuff, the budget, it really has been good kind of getting through that. And it's hard and frustrating, but it's also a good process. And then just the same. And then, um, just to say, right before this meeting, we have a Board of Finance meeting. And just a really happy update that, um, they approved an additional appropriation